Well, I'll call the meeting to order at 5:44. A reminder that this, um, this meeting is being recorded. Uh, for purposes of the online meeting, we've kind of changed the format of how this is being displayed to try to make it easier. Uh, thank you, Amy, for the time you put into getting this arranged for us. Um, we've also changed, uh, public comment. Um, all public comment must be submitted in advance, uh, of the public comment sections through the superintendent@stgrsd.org. And as long as your name and address is on it, we will be reading it during the public comment sections. Do you want to go to the next slide, please? Go back one, please. Okay, so earlier today, you should have received an email, uh, with warrant articles. I believe there was four warrants that need to be signed. Um, please sign them and return them to, uh, the main office. Uh, in your packets, you should have received, uh, the secretary's report dated 4/7/2020. I'll entertain a motion to accept those meeting minutes.
So moved. Second.
Anyone have any questions?
I got in.
Yay. Have the audios of our, um, virtual meetings, um, been posted prior to the approval of the minutes? Or do we wait to approve the minutes before the audios are posted?
I have been posting the, um, YouTube videos, um, before the meeting minutes are posted, and that's because the open meeting law with the remote participation, um, with everybody participating remotely says you're supposed to post the recording as soon as practicable after the meeting. So that's why the recordings of the meeting are posted, um, before the minutes are accepted. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
So are there any questions for the secretary's report? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Elsie?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Yes.
Anne Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Okay, moving on to correspondence.
So we received notification today, uh, from the Commissioner Riley and from Governor Baker that we will continue with our remote learning plan, uh, for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year. We will be receiving updated guidance on remote learning. Uh, the commissioner is putting together a list of the essential standards that all students should master before they move on from one grade to another, and they're going to be sending that to all school districts and ensuring that we cover the essential standards. Um, he's thinking that most of them have been covered in the previous months of school, so we will continue to reinforce them. But if some of the essential standards have not been covered, he is asking that we do our best to present these standards before the students, uh, get promoted into the upcoming school year. And so we will, we have a very, um, remote learning plan that already has our teachers, uh, communicating with students, and so this will continue. And, uh, we're, I feel like we're in a really good place as a school district with our technology that we have sent out and with the communication and the plan that we have in place to move forward.
Any other correspondence?
Not at this time.
Okay, moving on. At this time, it's time for our first public comment. I'm gonna ask if we check the superintendent account and see if we have any emails.
Chairman Hull, I do have one email. Good evening, members of the school committee, Superintendent Willard, citizens of Southwick. My name is Denise Edinger to Lauren Lane in Southwick, Mass. My daughter is a senior at Southwick Regional School. In light of Governor Baker's decision to close our schools until the end of the academic 2019-2020 school year, I would like to see senior activities such as the senior prom, senior picnic, and graduation postponed and not canceled until it is safe to have such activities. I represent a number of parents of seniors who are willing to share their time, talent, and support in order to make this happen. I would be willing to work with whoever would be in charge of those activities at the school end to make this happen. Thank you. That's the only public comment that we have through the superintendent email account.
Okay, let's move on to the next section.
Okay, so now I am gonna hand control of the screen over to Chairman Hull. Let me see if I can do this. Okay, Chairman Hull, you should be able to control the screen.
Okay. Um, late of last, uh, last meeting, I wanted to cover two topics this evening, uh, to make sure that folks know, um, when it's appropriate and how to, uh, modify or change actions. I want to make sure that the vendor understands the, the protocol and the process. I cannot manipulate it.
Here, well, let's try one more time. There, can you do it now?
There we go.
Good.
Okay, so we'll start with action items first. I want to make sure folks understand how to modify a, a motion. So once a motion is on the floor and it's been seconded, uh, and we get to the discussion point, at any point, if a committee member, uh, wants to make any change or, and the change could be a correction that we might have a mistake in the motion, um, to change the motion in its entirety or to table the motion, um, you have to put a motion on the floor. It has to be seconded, and then we'll take a vote on that particular motion. And if that motion is successful, uh, then the original motion would be changed or tabled or the, the mistake would be corrected. Um, but that is the proper protocol that we're supposed to follow to, to make any changes to a motion on the floor. Anybody have questions on that?
Are you going to go over revotes or re, um, whatever it's called? Sorry, I forget the official term. Going back and trying, yeah, isn't it called revoting?
So once a vote, so you're talking about after a motion's been passed?
Yes, sorry.
So if the motion's been passed, at that point, you've missed the opportunity to, to make any change to that motion. I would think that after that motion has been passed, um, we would have to bring it up at the subsequent meeting as a new business, as a new action item. Unless we're, if we've moved on past the point of action items in the agenda, I don't think we should be going backwards. I think we'd, we would need to bring it up in the next meeting.
Yeah, I think you're right, too. Okay.
All right, so that's action items. Let me see if I can still control this. Okay, so new business and old business. My screen's a little wonky here. I don't know if you guys are seeing the same thing. Um, I just want to remind folks that for new business and old business, that we're officially supposed to have it on the agenda in advance of the meeting. So when Amy's preparing to put the, uh, to officially post that meeting, so say it's a Tuesday meeting, by noon time on Friday, we would need to have all requests for new business and old business to get those items onto the agenda. Uh, you can send me an email, or you can send both of us an email with your request, and we'll work to, to get it into the appropriate section. But the, the bigger point, I think, of this, uh, reminder is that new business and old business, the topics, uh, are which would be for something that we would take action on. And I know often we get into conversations about things that really are more operationally related, and it's not necessarily the business of the, the school board. So just as a refresher or a reminder that if, if educational or operational school-related topics or questions come up, the best thing to do is to reach out to the superintendent directly. Uh, and if you're getting questions from constituents, for example, it, it's good to remind them of the same thing, that they, they should follow the proper chain of command. Uh, so for example, if it's a, if it's a issue related in the classroom, they should start with the teacher, and then the principal, and then the superintendent. Um, but in the same way, that's how we should be working with, uh, the district office as well. Uh, so old business and new business sections are specifically to talk about things that we either took action on or were going to take action on or potentially take action on. Does that make sense to folks?
So when we asked about the playground, we shouldn't have?
So it's a good, it's a good question. So if somebody's specifically looking for an update on something, like we'll take the playground, for example, um, that's something we'd want to bring up to either Amy or I in advance of the meeting, and then under educational presentations or in the superintendent report or the business, uh, operation manager's report, uh, they can then give us an update on something like that. That would be the, the best way to approach those things. But again, it, it starts with, you know, quite, uh, some dialogue with the district office.
And if a question or an idea comes up, comes to us in the middle of a meeting, then we should just write it down and later email you or Jen?
Depending on what section of the, the meeting we're in, um, can you have a, can you give me an example?
Well, you know, like if it's something that we had previously talked about dur, in the meeting, but then moved on, that kind of thing?
Uh...
Or if it's something that, like, had come up at a previous meeting and was related to, you know, like, something that Steve brought up, um, and then, you know, during Steve's presentation, asking for clarification on that, you know, something, something that came up previously that kind of comes to us during the meeting while we're talking about something related. I know that happens to me all the time. I just, I get thoughts and ideas at the wrong time.
I think we try to use our best judgment and try to bring it up in the appropriate context. So like, if you, if you want to go back to Steve, for an example, if, if you had some budgetary question, he does his reporting, and then maybe you can ask the question. Um, I, I just think we, sometimes we drift away from what our responsibility is and what our, what the purpose of this meeting is all about. The reality of this meeting is, is for the committee to conduct business, uh, to the, to the extent of what our responsibilities are. And when appropriate, we need to engage the district leadership to handle some of the things that we're just not responsible for. That helps to clarify.
Sometimes I feel like asking questions is an opportunity for, even though, even if I know the answer to that question, it's an opportunity to share it with whoever might be reading through the minutes, um, or not. But I guess, I, as you're talking, I'm thinking that maybe there are more questions I could ask prior to the meeting via email directly, but then I just, I kind of worry about the fact that you're losing some of that chance to, like, highlight it. But I get what you're saying.
You can also ask the superintendent questions directly. I, I think that's, uh, I mean, Jen and I are probably on the phone at least once a day, if not more, with different things that are going on that are just not the committee's purview, but I've heard something, so I ask questions. I believe that we have a really strong working relationship with the district office and very transparent when it comes to, uh, them getting back to us. So I, I just want to reinforce that. We, we, we need to remember that this meeting is about us operating the district. It's not necessarily about, um, the public. And that the purpose of this is for us to make decisions, ask the right questions for the decisions we're making, trying to be as informed as possible for the decisions we're making and then moving forward. If there's no questions on that, I will give Amy back the control, not that I know how.
Okay.
So this evening, we have, uh, two policies to read, and, uh, I apologize because we had a gap on one of them, and it was my fault. Uh, but tonight, we're gonna do the first reading of JLCEC, which is the Automated External Defibrillator Policy. If there's anybody that has any questions on that policy.
Um, I had a couple of questions. Let me find where I jotted them down. So my, um, my first question was, was, I, I'm assuming that the changes in the policy were just to make it less wordy, to streamline everything, um, go from many, many pages to just a few. My first question was, um, was the AED program coordinator involved in the writing of this new policy?
Um, I think that most of that, slimming it down, was taking out procedure out of it, but that there will be a separate procedure developed, and yes, our nurse Lamro was involved. I don't know if anyone else wants to talk to you, but, but the answer is yes, in that that what was removed was procedure, and it will be put into a new developing document.
Um, and in light of that, um, do any of the responsibilities that fall on our school nurses related to the AED need to be added to the school nurse job description? Or would that just fall under the policy document that you are creating?
Good question.
Now, there's a, a catch-all that says any other duties, uh, and this would fall under that if it's, because you can't list every specific little detail in a job description. It's just, uh, the major parts of what they do in a day. So this would be included in, um, a, a job, a nurse's job in the school.
Okay, thank you.
This is out of the scope of their job.
I would assume that we provide training for all staff members on how to use AED,
You want me to see if Ms. Sullivan's available?
Yeah.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, to answer, uh, the question about if the staff is trained, the AED is, um, designed so that anybody can come in and use it without specific training, but we do have, um, training, voluntary training for staff members in, in, um, the AED CPR, first aid, that we offer, um, free of charge to our staff members, anyone who wants to. Those trainings are run by Patty Cullen. She does it multiple times throughout the year. So we have, most of our, our staff members have participated in that training of their own, um, of their own free will, but it's not required.
Jenny, for clarification purposes, what of the, uh, Safe Schools applications that we take at the beginning of the school year, um, is there something to do with the AED on that and its locations in the school?
We do an annual training on our, um, Medical Emergency Response Plan, and it does, part of that is required. Um, one of the questions, um, one of the parts of the training that is, are part of the quiz is where are the AEDs located?
That's right.
So that staff members are aware of where they are. But again, these things talk to you, they tell you exactly what to do, they're designed to be pretty user-friendly. Um, but again, we do have quite a few staff members in every building that are trained specifically on that CPR and first aid. Any other questions?
Thank you for answering that.
No problem.
And if there's no other questions, we'll move on to the second reading of JKAA. Are there any questions on JKAA? Can you bring that to the first, yeah, thank you. Any questions on the physical restraint of students policy?
Right, or she's valid. No, she hasn't been, she's always been behind that. But she's up on the couch now.
Yeah.
Okay, seeing no questions, we're gonna move on to the next section of the committee meeting.
Move to approve the lead teacher job description recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Don't let the screen catch up with us here. Okay, any questions on the lead teacher job description? Okay, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Elsie?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is yes. The motion passes 7-0-0.
Move to approve the following school choice seats for the 2020-2021 academic school year recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on the school choice seats for the 2021 school year? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Elsie?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 7-0-0.
Move to rescind the motion for the Southwick-Talling-Granville Regional School District FY2021 budget in the amount of $26,298,860. Pass at the meeting on March 24th, 2020. Recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions on this action item to rescind our vote on March 24th, 2020? Okay, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Elsie?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 7-0-0.
Move to approve the Southwick-Talling-Granville Regional School District FY2021 budget in the amount of $26,207,612. Recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions on the, who proposed FY21 budget? Okay, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Elsie?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is yes. The motion passes 7-0-0.
Move to rescind the motion that passed at the meeting on March 24th, 2020, for the FY2021 Southwick-Talling-Granville Regional School District assessment ratios for the members' towns as follows. Do you want me to read it all, since we can all see it this time?
For accessibility, read it.
So move to, I'm, I'm going to read it, but this is what I'm rescind, we're asking to rescind.
I'll entertain a motion to, uh, to waive the reading in its entirety.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Pam?
Yes.
Elsie?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Yeah, yes. So we're waiving it in its entirety, passes 7-0-0. And I will need to vote on the motion on the floor, and that's to rescind the ratios described. Any questions on that motion? Okay, I'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Elsie?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 7-0-0.
Move to approve the FY2021 Southwick-Talling-Granville Regional School District assessments for the members' towns as follows. Operating assessment for transportation, Southwick at 84 and 43 percent at $631,537, Holland at 3.29 percent at $24,609, Granville at 12.28 percent in the amount of $91,854. Capital assessment, uh, for Southwick in the amount of 83.11 percent in the amount of $1,654,798, Holland 6.69 percent in the amount of $73,471, Granville 13.20 percent in the amount of $262,824. Minimum contribution from Southwick, $9,367,553, Holland in the amount of $422,883, Granville in the amount of $1,529,253. No discretionary charges, one non-discretionary assessment to Southwick in the amount of $12,000. Total assessment for Southwick, $11,665,888, Holland $520,963, and Granville in the amount of $1,883,931. Recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on the revised FY2021 assessments? Okay, if none, I will... Okay, through none, I will do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
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 Donovan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes, so the motion passes 7-0-0.
Move to rescind the motion that passed at the meeting on March 24, 2020, to approve the authorization to incur debt by the issuance and sale of bonds or notes up to the amount of $375,000 for the purchase of all items specified in the STG-RSD FY 2021 Capital Improvement Plan as follows. Can we waive the motion to read that? Chairman Hool?
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Are those in favor of waiving the full reading? Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes. Yes.
Jeff is a yes, so we'll waive the full reading. So now we're going to vote to rescind the capital plan that we voted on on March 24, 2020 for the FY 2021 authorization to incur debt. We'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Rescinding the vote, 7-0-0.
Move to approve the authorization to incur debt by the issuance and sales of bonds or notes up to the amount of $135,000 by the purchase of all items specified in the STG-RSD FY 2021 Capital Improvement Plan as follows. Technology, network infrastructure, equipment, including but not limited to storage servers and optical network terminals in the amount of $75,000. Building improvements, where we're going to replace the domestic water heaters at Powdermill School in the gym area, $20,000. Grounds improvements, replace the main entry concrete walkway at Woodland School in the amount of $40,000 for the total proposed improvements and acquisitions in the amount of $135,000. Recommended.
So moved.
So I have a second.
Second.
Second, sorry.
Any questions about the capital? Okay, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote to approve the capital. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 7-0-0. Okay, moving on to reports. Up first is the superintendent.
So I just wanted to let you know that I spoke with Principal Tremell early last week about looking at plans in anticipation of the school year being closed. He's going to be meeting virtually with students tomorrow, the senior leadership team, to solicit their feedback on some plans that we are putting in place or we would like to put in place for our seniors this year. As soon as we announced the closure, we received very similar to the public comment that we received tonight, we received some feedback from our senior parents who are looking to make this an amazing senior year for our seniors. Be expecting to hear from Principal Tremell from the regional school because they will be reaching out to you. We are aware that we want to make this as one rule and as special as we can for our seniors during our quarantining at home and our social distancing. We are aware of it, and we want to make the remainder of this school year special for them so that they remember it, and also look at some alternatives because clearly we cannot graduate on June 6. The other thing I want to do is just to thank, thank, thank all of our teachers, our parents, our students, and the Southwick-Tallinn-Granville community for coming together and remaking this remote learning a success. We appreciate feedback as we move forward. So if parents can think of anything, any additional supports that they would like from our school district, please email the superintendent's email address. Anything that we can do to make it better, support you at home, support our teachers, we'd like to hear about. So I'm glad our teachers are reaching out and doing an amazing job, and I just want to thank all these parents at home who are really keeping this this school year moving in the direction it needs to because we couldn't do it without you either. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Any questions for the superintendent?
Oh wait, I have a question. Are our food supports still, are our food supports still supporting lots of families? Are we, we will, will we continue to support them throughout the remainder of the year? Is that to be discussed?
Nope. Chelsea, we are, we're actually feeding this week. It was an interest of mine to make sure that our students were still being fed this week, so we are, we put a plan in place to feed our children this week. We will be feeding them for the remainder of the school year, and as of discussion today, we were already looking at to potentially keep them open for the summer. I'm not making that a guarantee right now, but it is something that is on our radar that we are looking into.
Great, thank you.
I just had a question about regarding the the seniors in the reach out you're doing with the principal and such. Is there any, is there any timeline for how quickly you're trying to make that decision of what to do? Or are we just kind of feeling it out at this point still? I know obviously it's still early.
Very, very early. I spoke with them today. We kind of have a plan that we would like to see happen, but again, I think it's really important to solicit the feedback of our students because this is their graduation. So we would like to have a plan rolled out within the next two weeks so parents can make plans, so students can make plans. And again, it's all going to be tentative based on the phases, move from phase one to phase two of President Trump's social distancing plan. I think we're going to have to be in at least phase two in order to uphold any type of graduation.
And I would suspect that we're going to have, you know, kind of multiple contingencies based on where we think we might be at certain points?
Exactly.
Okay.
Well, thank you for being open-minded and willing to think outside the box on these sorts of things.
Well, I think, again, I thank our students, I thank our community, and I thank our admin for really working together on this because when they say it takes a village, it really does to make sure things like this are just as special as the pomp and circumstance of previous graduations. We want it to be just as special for them with a lot of the same traditions.
Okay, moving on to the Director of Finance and Operations.
I have no report at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for the Director of Finance and Operations? Okay, we'll move on.
Just to thank you, Steve, for all the work you've put in over the last few weeks with all these revisions with the budget as well as the capital.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you to the finance subcommittee members who have made themselves available to discuss these, these issues. There's unfortunately not a lot of information flowing out of the state in terms of where we're, where we're headed next year, but we'll hope, we'll definitely continue to engage you guys in, in discussions as information becomes available to us.
Okay, moving on to our next section. Subcommittee reports. Negotiations is up first. I don't think there's been any change.
Yeah.
Finance Subcommittee?
This is Jess. We did meet, but it was around the budget and the capital plan, which we discussed already this evening.
Oh, oops, sorry. I didn't want to cut somebody off. Did I cut somebody off?
Nope.
LPVC Board of Governors?
So we are looking at a meeting. We initially had one scheduled for April 29th, so I'm just awaiting confirmation that there will be a virtual one on April 29th.
Okay. I have no update on LPVEC Board of Directors. We did see, I did see Anna from their central office last Friday? I'm losing track.
Yeah, Friday.
And she did make mention that they're working on setting up virtual meetings because they do need to keep some business moving for LPVEC. One of those very key, important things is taking a vote on including Southwick in their transportation plan for next year.
Correct.
Okay, Policy Subcommittee. I heard you had a very active meeting last week.
We did. Chelsea, I don't have my notes in front of me. If you want to, if you want an overview of the things that were talked about, or Maria?
Oh, sure. Speak up first. You can.
Got myself out of that one pretty quickly.
I think we re-reviewed the policy that we just went over. Shoot, what is it called? I was also just eating some bread. I'm going to pass it on because my mouth is full.
We reviewed the physical restraint policy, which we read tonight. We reviewed the AED policy that we read tonight. We talked about graduation requirements, which the committee should be seeing at the, at an upcoming meeting. And we also talked about, at the next meeting, we're going to take a look at the public comment policy and see if there are some adjustments that need to be made in light of our new technology.
Thank you. AED was escaping me, that word.
I think that's it for policy. We have another meeting scheduled for next, next week.
Back in action, ready to pump out some policies.
We have not had any Buildings and Grounds meetings since since this has started. Frankly, I did not want to pull Steve away from any of the financial stuff that's been going on. Once the dust settles, we can do some virtual meetings with the supervisor of Buildings and Grounds if you guys need something.
Jeff, I have a question just on the, on the Buildings and Grounds stuff, being that the buildings are going to be empty for the foreseeable future. Are we doing anything to, or does anyone know of anything that we're doing to say, let's, you know, mitigate any other costs that, you know, I'm thinking of like how, what temperatures are running the buildings at, just things like that that, you know, we're making sure that we, we save every bit that we can.
I figure I can summarize that. Steve, feel free to chime in. Steve and I had some phone call discussion just at the beginning of this, and he had mentioned that Eric Wykander, our Buildings and Grounds Supervisor, had been putting in temperature setbacks, making sure that we are minimizing the energy usage in the building. At the same time, they were very focused on doing thorough cleanings of the schools because at the time, we didn't know when we were going to be returning. But I believe that he took, he used the automated building management systems to to, I'm sure we're seeing with the energy bills. I think Steve commented on that.
Yeah, all of what you said is accurate, Mr. Hool. The other thing I might add is that we are doing daily building checks. So while our custodial staff is, is limited in the amount of time that we're, we're having them present in the buildings, there is somebody there daily who is doing a rotation through all three of the schools, verifying that systems are working, that we, we don't have any issues with leaks or any, any mechanical problems. So just to ensure that we don't have problems when, when it is time to, to come back. Unfortunately, the the guidance from the Department of Labor standards around having other work done in the buildings has unfortunately not allowed us to take advantage of this time, to at least do get a head start on some of the, the building cleaning and any type of repair projects that we might have on tap.
Just a comment with regards to buildings, and it does not need an answer at this time, but just want to make sure we think about how kids or families are going to get their belongings that are currently in the buildings that they won't be able to get for the remainder of the year.
That's a great question.
And obviously, teachers as well with regard to kind of pack up for the end of the year and prepare for the next and whatever happens next.
We did have a phone call with Commissioner Riley this morning, and he did explain that they are going to provide us with some information coming shortly on getting into school access. But as of right now, we are not allowed to access. But he's going to get us clarity, his exact words, "I'll be getting you clarity around school access." So we'll be waiting for that from the commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Transportation. You know, people have met again, no?
No.
Okay, IOT has not met. Any other Subcommittee or Liaison Report House? Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda. At this time, it's time for our second public comment. That's Amy to check the superintendent email account and see if we have any additional public comments.
I do have, oh whoops, yeah, I'm on. I do have a couple of public comments, so let me just bring those up. The first public comment comes from Griffin Perro, 11 Lacore Drive. "I really hope you're actively working to ensure that students with learning disabilities and varying educational needs are being supported throughout this school closure. If not, please start working to make sure all students' needs are recognized and supported." Okay, and that concludes, concludes the public comment. I thought there was another one, but it's a marketing email, so it's actually a public comment.
All right, moving on to our next section. Old Business. Folks should have received an email as a reminder to complete the superintendent evaluation. I will, I believe our date was yesterday to get this completed by. I will fully admit that I have not done my part yet, but if you could, if you haven't done it already, if you could get that wrapped up sometime this week so that Amy and I could put together a final report out for our next meeting, that would be much appreciated. And any? And we have nothing for new business this evening. Anybody have anything else? Last call. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, sorry, I was muted. You're back. You're back. Can we just, can we confirm our next meeting? Before we adjourn? Is it on the 5th?
It should be, I mean, 5th.
Okay, thank you. And is it at 5?
If, oh, your time works for everybody. We're gonna stick with starting at 5 o'clock. Is there any objection to that?
That's okay with me.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to adjourn. It was seconded. We'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Jess, is it a yes? Have a good evening.
Have a good evening.